Wait, wait. Quiet in front. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of May 12, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Zisada. Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker. Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present.
All right, Alderwoman Zisada and Alderman Walker both let me know that they couldn't be here tonight ahead of time, which is great. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item B, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could stand, we're gonna have Shadow Gentry, Mr. Hyvee himself, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. You betcha. All right, then, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
The agenda has been approved. We're gonna move on to Agenda Item D, Presentations, but just real quick. So we've got some swearing ends tonight. I know a lot of people are here for that. We'll also have a quick report from our DeKalb Fire Department, Chief Thomas. I'd love it if we all could stick around and hear that. It'll be really fast. We've got some wonderful proclamations. We're recognizing organizations and we're bringing awareness to some groups. This will all take maybe 10, 15 minutes, and at the end of that, I'll let you all off the hook and you can go home unless you're staying for the whole meeting for some other reason. But if you could, let's just stick around until that time. That would be absolutely fantastic. So with that, we have our swearing ends of newly elected officials. How does it work? So I just call myself? So I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call Cohen Barnes, existing mayor and mayor-elect, to the front to be sworn in.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Cohen Barnes.
I, Cohen Barnes.
Having been elected as mayor.
Having been elected as mayor.
And the city of DeKalb.
The city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities. Thank you.
All right, we've got a really exciting night because we've got multiple swearing ends, which is just phenomenal. Oh, you're right. Oh, you're right. I was gonna, wait, wait. Yeah, yes, exactly. We got this. We got this. All right, so then also, I would like to call Alderwoman and Alderwoman-elect Barb Larson to the front to be sworn in as our second Ward Alderperson.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Barb Larson.
I, Barb Larson.
Having been elected as second Ward Alderman.
Having been elected as second Ward Alderman.
In the city of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Okay, and before we swear in our fourth Ward Alderman, I would like to call Alderman Person, Alderman Perkins, our Alderperson, down to the front because we have a tradition that we always do in the city of DeKalb, and we have a little something, something for you. So come on down, Mr. Nicholas.
You have something to say. Hear ye, hear ye. We are very proud tonight to have newly electeds and reelecteds in our midst and also overtaken by the very trust and foil and hard work and effort person, Ray Perkins. And part of that process that you intimated is to give that person a sign.
And so you all know, you have a choice on part of the sign. You want to be circled, you want to be what? Of course, I had no doubt it would be Perkins.
All right, then, something unique tonight. We have a newly elected Alderperson who will be sworn in as our new fourth Ward Alderman, and that is Mr. Justin Carlson. Can you come up to the front?
Repeat after me. I, Justin Carlson.
I, Justin Carlson.
Having been elected as fourth Ward Alderman.
Having been elected as fourth Ward Alderman.
In the city of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois. Sorry, I'm on. And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
All right, now, number four, we have Andre Powell from the fifth ward. Would you come up to the front, Mr. Powell? Andre is our fifth Ward Alderman currently and our Alderman-elect as well.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Andre Powell.
I, Andre Powell.
Having been elected as fifth Ward Alderman.
Having been elected as fifth Ward Alderman.
In the city of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
All right, now, we have Mike Verbic, our existing sixth Ward Alderman, who is also Alderman-elect. If you can come to the front and be sworn in, sir.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Mike Verbic.
I, Mike Verbic.
Having been elected as sixth Ward Alderman.
Having been elected as sixth Ward Alderman.
In the city of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
All right, and we have another unique situation here where we have Mr. Brad Hoy is our city clerk-elect. Mr. Brad Hoy, can you come up to the front and be sworn in as our newly elected city clerk?
Please repeat after me. I, Brad Hoy.
I, Brad Hoy.
Having been elected as city clerk.
Having been elected as city clerk.
In the city of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of city clerk.
The duties of city clerk.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
All right, I'm gonna put everyone on the spot real quick, and if we don't mind, I'm just gonna go around the room real quick and allow everyone to make a quick comment. I don't know if you wanna start, Alderwoman Larson. Anything to say? You don't have to.
I'm glad you're here another four years.
I'm glad you're here for another four years. Alderwoman Larson is an incredibly hardworking, dedicated, well-read, asks questions, holds you accountable Alderperson for the city of DeKalb, and it's wonderful to serve another four years.
Just tell me, no see.
Yep. Alderman Carlson, what would you like to say?
I'd like to thank Alderman Perkins. I know it's becoming redundant. However, you did a great job the last six years, and you've done amazing with me of the transition. You answered everything. You've, we've met. You've just been incredible, and I wish you nothing but the best, and I hope I can do half the job you did. That's the luck of you. Thank you.
Alderman Verbic.
Well, couldn't do this out without my wife, Jennifer. So if it wasn't for her, I could not be here serving, in addition to family and friends, and most certainly Ward Six. I really appreciate your confidence in my leadership, and I look forward to working for you over the next four years.
City Clerk Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm really excited to represent the citizens of DeKalb in this capacity. I wanna thank all of you for your support and looking forward to working with the great team that we have in place here, both as our elected officials and our city staff. And I'm really looking forward to working with Ruth, who I've worked with a number of different capacities over the years. And I do have to apologize. In typical clerk fashion, I have to leave the meeting early. But as you know, I wear a number of hats, and one of those hats is with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau. We're having a presentation, or at least we're having our report approved. But I am traveling to Peoria to participate in a Sports Illinois huddle where I'm gonna try to bring sporting events to DeKalb and to DeKalb County.
Awesome.
So I am working on behalf of the city, even though I won't be here in the capacity for the remainder of the meeting, but I'll be working to bring some more business and fans and money here into DeKalb and DeKalb County.
We love it.
So wish me luck.
Thank you. And for me, Alderman Powell, yes.
I just wanna thank the citizens of DeKalb for the support that they give us all, and especially my ward. They've been pretty good to me. And Perkins, I wanna thank you as well. You know, like I said, you've done a lot for me in my small time here, and I look forward to working with everyone and seeing what else we can get done.
For those of you that don't know, we had a vacancy in our Ward Five seat here, and Alderman Powell stepped up and filled that seat for, was it, almost two years?
A little over a year.
Yeah, a little over a year. And then also chose to go through the process of running for reelection and being in the seat again. Been a wonderful contributor and look forward to working with you for the next, well, two years until you run for reelection, Alderman Powell. For me, really quick, I just, I like Alderman Verbic. Definitely gotta thank my wife of 32 years, Amy Barnes in the background. Yes, come on. Thank you. That helps me. But going through the process of being mayor and then the election process, it can be quite a bit. And many of you have seen what transpires online, and my wife has to take a brunt of a majority of that. So thanks, sweetie, for always being there for me. It's the Team Barnes, for sure. I also, I'd be totally remiss of, you know, when you run for reelection, you talk about "I, I, I, I" because it's you running. But I try and use the term "we" as much as possible. And I have to thank the city of DeKalb staff that's out there. My gosh, I just did a ride along on Friday with our DeKalb Police Department. Amazing, amazing professionals out there keeping our streets, our individual, our property, our families safe. Our fire department, our street department, water department, admin, I mean, the city of DeKalb staff is bar none. Just an amazing group of individuals to work with, and they're all dedicated to moving the needle positively forward in the city of DeKalb. Also, the leadership team, if not but for you, you couldn't help enable your staff to be so successful. And that's each and every one of you sitting there. That's City Manager Nicholas, especially, our main leader of the city of DeKalb and council's direct report. The city manager does a phenomenal job, but also previous councils, previous mayors, but especially the city council and now newly elected city council members. What this group has done and how they come together to try and figure out how can we do the best job possible for everyone that lives in the city of DeKalb. And not everyone's gonna agree with us, not everyone's going to get on board with all of our ideas, but I wanna assure everyone, a lot of time, energy, and thought went into every single decision we make, and we do the best we can with what we have to represent everyone here in the city of DeKalb. So I wanna thank just everyone and those of you in the audience for coming out. Public participation is dreamy. So thank you, everyone. All right, enough of all that. We're gonna move on to our DeKalb Fire Department's 2024 Annual Report. And everyone, if you don't know, this is the one, the only Chief Thomas, our fire chief of the DeKalb Fire Department. Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging with me for a minute. By the time I get the rhythm down of running the clicker and speaking, it'll be over. So, so this is just a snapshot. I know our report is quite long, and it is on the city website, so we'll just give you a couple of highlights. But first of all, I wanna thank our administrative team, Jill and Sammy, and all the work they did on this report. And then, of course, to our firefighters and paramedics for doing the work. So we're gonna get on with it. I think the council cares a lot about our call volume, so that'll be the first slide. So we, and as you can see, there's a 10-year bar graph there. We're down a little bit, but I have a bit of an explanation for that. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna read it so I get it right. So, but as you know, our call volume can ebb and flow from year to year. And in 2020, late 2023, we started to really analyze some of the trends that were affecting our call volume. 2023 was a busy year. So was '24. But we found out that there was a strong trend of non-emergent calls. And so we wanted to see what we could do to help, help the patient mitigate their issue so that we could decrease the non-emergent responses. And a few of those folks did benefit once we realized we had partners out there, such as Elder Care and Ramp and the DeKalb County Housing Authority. It's, and there are more. But as soon as we started to connect the dots and place patient with the appropriate service agency, we were able to be successful in mitigating those non-emergent calls. So that did affect our numbers this year. And just real quick, we had two patients in 2023, for example, and this is what kinda got us down this path. They accounted for over 120 calls. And so that is a chunk that's off of our total call volume this year. But again, it's not, it's very minimal what we're seeing as a difference. But as a result of that, that kinda led us down the path that we need to be more active in finding these people that need that extra help. And that's something that you have seen as, at the city council level with grant writing for starting a community paramedicine program. So that will be a focus that will be part of our attention to get people the help that they need. So since we're on the front lines, it seems like a good fit. Okay, so moving on. So obviously, most of the calls happen in our own homes. So fire incidents are no exception to that. As you can see, 53% of fires occur in our homes. And then likewise, ambulance responses are as well. So we had over 6,600 ambulance responses, and the differences would be engine responses between our call volume at 7,400 versus 6,600. So 81% of our work is EMS medical. Here's our engine responses. We have it broken down, if you can tell by color. So each rig is assigned a color. So it doesn't mean that there are that many calls in District One, Two, or Three. District Three remains our busiest district, and oftentimes Medic One or Medic Two will cover the next call in District Three. So you guys have heard us talk about simultaneous calls before. That's what I'm alluding to. So let's make sure I'm going the right way here. So engine responses are the same thing. They're covering each other's response districts. So then our heat map, which is always telling of where the heavy call volume is, and you can see it in the highlighted color, the yellow and pink colors there. The other colors indicate heavy call volume, but not as busy as that yellow color. So we have Station Four identified on this map. Station Four is not included in this report. So that was just my oversight. But along with all the running of calls, we have to train. And we're very robust in our training. We wanna have this second nature with all of our personnel on handling anything that's thrown at them. And this year, we had nearly 30,000 hours of training. A lot of that is required. All of these agencies tell us how many hours we need per person for training, including IDPH for paramedics. So that seems like a big number. It is, but it's also a very important number for us. And then we had some new hires throughout the year. One of them's standing right over here, right here. And we continue to struggle with the nationwide difficulty in recruiting, but our HR department's done a terrific job with that, and we're just keeping pace with the needs. So. And then our local remains very active. And I'd just like to point out that they volunteer hours in the community. They also gift, give, whatever the right way to say it is, $25,000 a year to different entities. So pictured here is a presentation for the LifePAC AED Program, Automatic External Defibrillator. The local has done a cost-sharing grant program to get more of these out in our community. To date, there are 16 that the local has shared cost with the different entities out there that are interested in keeping those. And then the fire department trains the people how to use them. So it's kind of a partnership all the way around. And then, of course, let's talk turkey. It's one of the firefighters' favorite things to give to. So looking forward, and this might seem ironic, but looking forward, we are opening Station Four, which has now been open for a month. But that is this year. We're talking about last year. We have a new King Cobra Rosenbauer aerial ladder truck coming soon, by the end of the month, we think. We've been patiently waiting that. There's a really big piece of equipment, very expensive. It should be here for 25, 30 years, once we get it in service. And then, again, the implementing of the Community Paramedicine Program. That's something that we are looking forward to getting rolling. So that concludes my report. Again, the full report, which is riveting, is on the city website. If, and if you all have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Counsel, any questions for the chief?
Just a great big thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
And the new station's wonderful.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
It is.
All right, thanks, chief.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I just got a few proclamations I wanna read, and at the end of each one, I think every one of these, we have someone claim the proclamation. So counsel will come down to the front and do a quick photo op. The first one is on National Police Week. So whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week, and the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of DeKalb play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community. And it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And our police department has grown to be a modern and progressive law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, urge DeKalb citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their communities, have established for themselves the right and security of all citizens. Let's give a round of applause for our National Police. All right, our next proclamation is for Public Works Professionals. So whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of DeKalb. And these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts and of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in DeKalb to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby designate the week of May 18 through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Let's give a round of applause for our public works. Let's give a round of applause for our Public Works Professionals. All right, I know we've got a bunch of you out there. All right, we're gonna have to do a couple rows, squish in like we like each other. I know you're around each other all day. Mike and his team are here. We all depend on our water for drinking and showering and all that. His crew, Mike Taylor, he's not listening. Mike Taylor, it'll be twenty-five below, outside in the middle of winter, and a water main break happens. And they're there, out in it, out in the water, the freezing cold, making sure that the water continues the flow. And I've seen this time and time again for years. So our Public Works are...
You wanted it right off.
I know, no, no. I want to do it sunny, seventy. Yes, exactly. But they are an amazing team that really do amazing work in the City of DeKalb, just like all of our staff do. All right, now we've got EMS Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And the Emergency Medical Services team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme "We Care For Everyone," and engage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. How about a round of applause for our EMS Week? Now we have a proclamation for Motorcycle Awareness Month, May 2025. And many of us know how important this is. Whereas motorcycles are a primary, common, and economical means of transportation that reduce fuel consumption and road wear and contribute in a significant way to relief of traffic and parking congestion. And it is especially meaningful that the citizens of DeKalb are aware of motorcycles on roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And the members of Abate of Illinois Incorporated, a brotherhood aimed towards education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs, and have presented motorcycle awareness to over a hundred and twenty thousand participants in Illinois over the past nine years. And all motorcyclists should actively promote the safe operation of motorcycles, as well as motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the City of DeKalb and throughout Illinois. Therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, in recognition of thirty-eight years of Abate of Illinois Incorporated and over three hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighteen registered motorcyclists statewide, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of DeKalb, and urge all motorists to join in the effort to improve safety and awareness on roadways. Let's give recognition to Motorcycle Awareness Month. All right, Frank, you got some? Whereas each May, our nation celebrates Older Americans Month to honor the countless contributions that older adults have made and continue to make in our communities, workplaces, and families. And older Americans embody the strength, wisdom, and perseverance that form the foundation of our society, having lived through and contributed to decades of progress and change. And these individuals continue to enrich our communities through volunteerism, mentorship, civic engagement, and leadership, sharing their talents and life experiences across generations. And older adults have demonstrated remarkable strength and resilience in overcoming challenges and adversity, adapting to change, and embracing new opportunities to lead fulfilling and meaningful lives, and ensuring that older adults have access to supportive services, healthcare, affordable housing, transportation, and opportunities for social engagement is essential to fostering a society where people of all ages can thrive. And Older Americans Month provides an opportunity for individuals of all generations to reflect on the importance of inclusion, respect, intergenerational connection, and strengthening the social fabric of our communities. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Older Americans Month. Let's give a round of applause. for swearing-ins, proclamations, all that. Now is the time that if you would like, you can get up and you can exit stage left. We really appreciate you coming out and sharing the moment. What's that?
Left for you, right for you.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay, stage right. You know what I'm saying. So, yeah, I was right. Stage left. It is, yes. So thanks, everyone, for coming out. I'll see some of you later, I hope. All right. Have a great night, everybody. Bye. Bye, Perkins.
Bye, Henry.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Bets. All right, we'll give them just a sec. Dale, are they all congregating right outside the door?
Can't do it.
No, you can't close the door. Yeah, you can't close the door. But you are a major in the military. You could probably shoo them along. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started on the rest of our agenda, which is moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. I do have two speaker request forms. Joe Planger Schultz, I'm sorry, Joe, I'm destroying it. You want to come on up to the podium?
He's maybe the other person.
Yeah, no, I do them in order, so I got yours, so feel free. And as just a reminder, I got to tell everyone, gotta hold you to three minutes, Joe.
Three minutes, yes.
You got it.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I'm sorry this is coming on the tail of a feel-good meeting. Each of you, and I do mean this sincerely, each of you deserves the applause and the credit that you got tonight for doing a good job. I'm here to talk about a topic that is not so happy, not so friendly. I was very upset about what happened a week ago tonight involving the shooting that happened on Kimberly and DeKalb. When these things happen, I honestly kind of feel like I'm losing faith in this town and in this community. When the Facebook posting went up, over two hundred people responded, said something, many of them very ignorant things. I'm one person that had the guts or the wherewithal to come up here and talk about it with you tonight. I believe the law stipulates that if this involves Section Eight housing, that any crime that occurs is reported to Section Eight and could result in eviction. And I want to say that I really deeply believe that nobody should have to have neighbors like that, nobody. I belong to a church. It's called Saint Paul's Episcopal Church in DeKalb. I'm not here as a spokesman for that church tonight. We are located about three blocks south of the new elementary school. And I want to tell you that I'm fearful for the safety of those kids who will be walking to school every morning and walking home. And I hope that the city is doing everything it possibly can to support the chief and his team so that these kids remain safe. There are a lot of good things happening in DeKalb, and I'm not gonna say there aren't, but there are some things going on that are not okay. And I'm just here to remind you that when things like this happen, shakes people up. I'm just thankful to God that nobody got killed.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joe. All right, now I have our newly-elected School Board President, Chris Boyes. I think you're just coming up as Chris Boyes. I don't know, but...
Yes, I do not speak on the head of the board.
All right, this is Chris Boyes. You have three minutes, sir.
So Mayor Barnes, when he was reelected in his talk this evening, talked about "we." And I just want to say that something that I appreciate about this newly-elected council is that I know when we talk about the word "we," it isn't just "we" as a city, isn't just "we" as a council. They are all people who look at it as "we" as a community holistically across all of our government bodies and all of our citizens. So I just genuinely want to take a moment to say how excited I am, not speaking for the school board, but as a member of the board, to know that we will have a continued team of individuals right here in front of us, and even some behind us, when we've got Courtney from the Visitors Bureau, Melissa from the Economic Development Corporation. We have, in our county right now, I would argue, the A-team in all positions. We are all people that are ready to get down, roll up our sleeves, to do what we need to do for the citizens of this community so that we truly can be a place that people want to work, live, play, and learn. So I just genuinely want to take a moment to thank all of you for your continued commitment to our community, and I want to say that I look forward to continuing to work with each and every one of you to benefit the citizens of our community. Thank you.
Mr. Boyes, I appreciate you coming out tonight and saying that. And I do believe, and I won't speak before for my council either, but I do believe everyone here is looking at the bigger picture. We're not in silos. We all represent our governing bodies, and the only way we're gonna be successful is by working together. So really excited that you came out tonight and expressed that, and I will give you at least my commitment to having the same mentality as we approach negotiations or cooperative endeavors that we decide to go on. So thank you very much. All right, moving on to Agenda Item, and Chris, you don't have to stay. Yeah. All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have none, which moves us on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, Joint Review Board Meeting Minutes of October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Number three, Accounts Payable and Payroll through May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Number four, Investment and Bank Balance Summary through March twenty-twenty-five. Number five, Year-to-Date Revenues and Expenditures through March twenty-twenty-five. Number six, Crime-Free Housing Bureau Report, April twenty-twenty-five. Number seven, FY twenty-twenty-five Human Services Funding First Quarter Report. Number eight, FY twenty-twenty-four Police Pension Treasurer's Report. Number nine, FY twenty-twenty-four DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, DCDC, Report. And number ten, FY twenty-twenty-four DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau Report. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, signed by Alderman Powell. Any comments or questions on that? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
All right. Then moving on to Agenda Item H, Public Hearings. We have none. Agenda Item I, Considerations. Number one, consideration of the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-thirty-five Water System Master Plan. City Manager.
Thank you. Just before I start into water, I just want to say, and I should have said when you invited a comment, that every one of those reports is worth perusing and reading in total, if you have time, because these are all agencies and entities, those are further down the list, that are doing service to us, to our community, and that we support financially and otherwise throughout the year. So it's good work. It's good small-city stuff, and appreciate it.
And you're absolutely right. It was part of the consent agenda, but I'd be remiss not to mention that the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, Melissa is here, just in case we did have any questions. And I think Courtney Strohacker was in the audience somewhere at some point. There she is, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So it's great they came out as well, just to make sure if there's any questions or anything, that they would be here to answer. But both of those organizations are incredible partners. Chris mentioned the A-team. The way we get all this done is because of the A-team that we have. And these organizations are vital components to the success that we have, whether it's attracting people to our community, or it's also attracting commercial and industrial business to our community. So thank you, too, for coming out. And with that, if you wanted to leave, you don't have to stay either. I'm letting you off the hook while everyone's watching. All right. No, Agenda Item I, because, well, actually, these two organizations are incredibly busy, and I know you guys have, you all have plenty to do. All right, so sorry, City Manager.
No, that's all right. So let's talk about a plan that has been prepared by Baxter and Woodman. We have a couple of people in the audience tonight. Carolyn Greaves, who's the Vice President of Baxter and Woodman, cannot be here tonight, but we have Karina Petrou. Is it, did I pronounce that? Petrou? And who helped hold this together, and Lauren Shuld, who also was interchangeable with all of the interstaff activity between Baxter and Woodman and the city staff. And so what you have by way of presentation tonight is a master plan that the council thought was appropriate to commission back in late October of two thousand and twenty-three. The plan that is going to be briefly summarized tonight was presented to us in April, and this was the first opportunity we have to look at it. I wanted to make it very clear that we have relied on the Baxter and Woodman's expertise... And so what you have, by way of presentation tonight, is a master plan that the council thought was appropriate to commission back in late October of 2023. The plan that is going to be briefly summarized tonight was presented to us in April, and this was the first opportunity we have to look at it. I wanted to make it very clear that we have relied on the Baxter and Woodman's expertise over many years, and they've been very familiar with our water system. But new people involved in the creation of this report. And I will also say that in my summary, if there are any errors there, they're the responsibility of the author and not the company. The company was very patient with us. We've had some transition in leadership, as you know, and we've had a lot of other things to deal with in the last year-plus, almost year and a half. And I'm just delighted with the assistance that they gave us and their patience and willingness to work with us, because part of the scope, or I should say, the scope relied heavily on information that we could give about projections for population equivalence, which aren't just people living in homes, but also people who are coming into work in businesses. And we've been expanding, so there are more of those, more of the latter. And all those together are users. And so we had to, as best we could, project where we might be, not talk about where we are today, and then project where we might be in five years and then in 10 years. I will also just say, by way of a caveat, that I did not attempt in my background to go into the delineation of a revised water model. As much as you may have wanted me to talk about that kind of technical expertise, I did not want to do that, but it is essential to defining how we're gonna characterize and categorize capacity needs and also distribution improvements over time. And I invite you to go back and study that. So I gave you an existing water system overview. It seems maybe out of place tonight that we're digging into such a serious thing. I know, but bear with me here. It's an important study, and it has really defined a nice path for us, which I'll get to shortly. Our existing water system, which we talk about every budget year, is really remarkable for a small city such as ours. And this council, previous councils going back the last couple of decades, have helped to make that what it is and also helped to make us more attractive for new business and also for existing business. Not to mention people who are moving here to start families and to create homes. They can know our water is safe, it's abundant. And by the way, I don't know where we are this year, but last year was the best tasting water in the Midwest and one of the best in North America. We're very careful. Justin Netzer, who is our Water Superintendent, is leader of the Water Division. Andy Rye is the Public Works Director, as you know. And those two together and others who are on their staff are just as, in fact, are much more determined every day than I could ever be with other duties that I have to make sure that what I just said comes true year after year after year. So, so much for the commercial. We have identified in the background how we can determine what we need to provide by way of capacity, whether in well capacity or in distribution management, the water that people need and that businesses need. And I won't, I can come back to that, but I'm not gonna belabor that. I have a number of charts and graphs, which I borrowed from the report, which are very carefully done by the consultants. We have explained to you how we define what our existing demand is by way of population equivalence, where we stand with averages for the kind of delivery system we have. And then, just as important, maybe more important, is what future water system demand is going to be. We know that we're expanding by way of industrial and commercial activity. And people are appropriate when they say, well, we have enough water. Are we shifting most of our water to one area and not gonna have enough as we look ahead five or 10 years? There's some good news in this report. And I want to thank, you can have all the equipment in the world and all the underground infrastructure, but if you don't manage it well and you don't work at every, literally, every single hour of every day, then things can happen. There are communities to the east of us and in other parts of Illinois and around the country who may have only two wells. And they run those wells like you're drinking a soft drink with a straw. And we're not doing that. We are alternating pumping so that we can make sure that we're being kind to our aquifer, so we're not putting demands on this or that part of that aquifer more than we should be. In addition, we are pumping off-peak to try to save money for our users. So the peak hours would be during the day, and if we do pumping, it's generally at night. And we also have four large storage towers, thanks to the prescience of previous older persons and staffs, as I mentioned. And those storage vessels are very important in the overall pumping and capacity equation. And during the day, as we draw more by way of demand, those towers, which were filled overnight, are going to be providing by gravity the water that we need. And then they get refilled at night, and they're done in a variable way. And this is all controlled by a, now a computerized system, which we are looking to replace, independent of this study, but certainly because of this study and other things, by the end of this year. It's called, the acronym is SCADA system, and I won't bore you with the, what it spells out to be, but it's the electronic basis for making judgments about, are we safe today, or are we going to be safe tomorrow? We've also projected for 2030 and 2035, we broke it down by land use type. And there are a dozen types here for you to look at. It's not like three things, commercial, industrial, and residential. We broke out the kind of industrial entity that may be a high-water user but doesn't employ a lot of people. And then others that are not such high-water users but may have a lot of activity in the course of the day, such as a logistical center, a lot of truckers coming in and out, a lot of toilets flushing, not a lot of water being used overall. Water being used for cooling in larger, like, data centers is a treasure and a precious commodity, and we want to make sure there's recycling of that and also that the average is within our means. And I'm happy to say that in terms of water use, that the increase in the last three to four years, which is the period for the greatest investment in some of those higher-water user, higher-water, at least theoretically, businesses, has been good, our experience is good. So there are some recommendations that came out of the study. And I've highlighted those for you because you're going to see some more from our staff in the next month or two, to get us on practical steps to realize what those recommendations are. In terms of water supply, as the study looked at the information we had on population projections, and that includes the people working, but not necessarily living in our community, we found that in about 10 years, not in one year or two years, but in about 10 years, we're gonna be reaching a point where, by the most conservative calculation, our use would be offset, beginning to offset basically what we can pump in a day. And rather than wait and to do it at the price that would be current 10 years from now, and with our ability, based on our reserve in the water, various, the two water funds, our main user fund and then our capital fund, we are going to recommend a new shallow well that will give us about 1,000 more gallons a day, which will then relieve us and project us out another five years beyond. And that's without going into the deepest aquifer that we have west of DeKalb. Another thing that I noted was a new transmission main on the south side. Another council numbered time back in the early 2000s took our two endpoints, which are on the north side of the tollway, and ran them underneath the tollway. And also, about three and a half years ago, with the help of a private developer, we were able to create another water loop, which now serves for our Amazon, Kraft Heinz, and Meta. But our growth is continuing south, and there's no Loop Main down there. And what attracted those three very large businesses to DeKalb was, among other things, in the top five, the utility access that we provided. Comment was another piece of that. But we're a utility too, and our water supply was not only measured in terms of capacity at the wellhead, but also in terms of what was available to them on the ground, proximate to their buildings. So we're in progress right now, working with Baxter and Woodman on the design, we're about 60% through with the design of a new transmission main that would go down 23, where the, picking up just south of Gerler, where the current loop ends, and taking it down to Kessler, running east on Kessler and up on Afton Road. So basically, another wide loop that would take in probably 1,000-plus acres. I underline plus on that. We're 60% complete, but we are hoping, we're working with the IEPA to see if we can get a low-interest loan for that, pay that off over time. On the fire flow and system repair side of things, we are always concerned about having enough flow rate and the duration of the flow at any one time. The chief is here, but we need 3,500 gallons per minute at minimum to be able to serve our department as it's fighting a major structure fire. And we have that now, but looking ahead, one problem we have is in some pockets in town where we have the oldest mains. Those mains that were put in the ground as long ago as 1920, in that period, 1920 to 1960, they're four- and six-inch mains. They just don't have the capacity. And we've been replacing those, we've been putting about a million gallons, million gallons, million dollars into infrastructure replacement in the last four to five years. And we're gonna recommend that we continue to do that. We can expand our system to meet new capacity demands, while at the same time, working on fire flow in older neighborhoods. And this is really the old town. These are the parts of town that were first extended water service. So we need to get at that, the consultants properly notice that. We've identified, as you look through the study, at a number of colorized maps, basically, the chief was talking about earlier, heat maps of these areas that we need to keep focusing on. We're doing it, we're digging at it, we need to keep doing it. Another thing is backup emergency power. We're in pretty good shape. Our four elevated towers store just under 6 million gallons. And at any time of the day, a major water main break and a fire at the same time, we can handle, we can pump and keep the system full, so nobody on the other side of town notices any difference. But emergency power is critical when, if the third, if the double arrives, because you've got already, you've got a major fire, and you've got a water main break, and then the power goes out. That's something, you can't just train on it, you have to find a solution to. And we've got emergency power right now. We ought to, and by the end of this year, we'll have 9.7 million gallons a day, supported by emergency pumping capacity. But we have four wells with our six-deep wells, or a combination, nine wells, six deep and three shallow, that could get generator manual transfer switches added to them, and so we're gonna work on that. We'll have a plan for that. We're not gonna do it all in one year. Each one of these generators is somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars. But we can do all these things and measure it out and plan it out. That's all I want to say.
That's it?
I could say more.
We're just getting warmed up. Yeah. Council, questions or comments? Alderman, Larson.
Okay, so if you were talking about a new well and the connection to the nearby treatment plant.
Yeah. Want to know about that?
Whenever day we vote on this and say yes, when's, how long until we're pumping water out of that?
About a year. We have to do a test well, I referenced that in here. We're working with some property owners to the west of our community on, just off Lincoln Highway. It's our treatment plant with remaining capacity to take 1,000 gallons a day would be there, near the West Water Tower. Drive right by it, probably.
Because don't we have a well like on Nelson?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but there the, and if we end up there, that's fine. But what we have to do is find the limits, doing some boring, of our shallow aquifer, which is the sand and gravel, not the limestone deeper aquifers, which are further west. And it comes into that area, and then it kind of is a jagged line and goes away. So we don't want to damage the aquifer's generating ability by just getting on an edge, basically, and just starting to suck it dry. But we want to hit a good part of it, a good seam of it. And being that close to a treatment plant means the quote "raw main," meaning that area that go from the well to the treatment facility before the water's treated. The shorter the run, the cheaper it is for us to get it done. If we go out to Nelson, then that's two, three times as far. We're just trying to do this as economically as possible without shorting anybody in terms of quality.
Alderman Verbic. Thank you. City Manager, you mentioned the low-interest loan, which would be one component of a funding model for the future of our water system. You know, certainly, how do we, and it's a work in progress, I understand, but certainly, we need to look to new development to help us with our funding model for these future needs. So I think that this information is extremely valuable to help drive that model, so that we know, sitting up here, how are we going to fund that over time with the different components that you mentioned?
What we did five years ago, which made the difference in how things developed on the south side, was we basically stuck to what we knew best and what we had the means to do, which is frankly, the cheapest of the big three. The big three, water, sewer, sanitary sewer, and roads. We didn't have to put money into roads, we didn't have to put money into the sanitary sewer extension, but we did help with the water. And that is something also we want to control, and both in terms of design and also the geography that it serves. We're trying to stick to what we know, but also what we can afford. The other way is you throw it all together, we'll be the loser there, because if we pay a third of a higher number than, or whatever the percentage is. So what we're gonna see, we're gonna see what the pricing is, and then we'll come back to you. You'll get a chance to chew on this and give us direction on that.
And also to touch on, there's a brief mention about an emergency supply with Sycamore. What could you tell us about that at this point? There's a one-line included in the report. There's been discussions about providing emergency service with Sycamore.
Oh, it was in the Baxter and Woodman report?
Yes.
I don't know what, in what context that was said. Yeah, it's, we're not looking to run a line north to do that.
I'd be interested in what they are referring to.
I don't remember. Justin, do you remember what that, we have some?
Yeah, it's just an interconnect between towns. It's not done yet, but it would be something we could look into in the future.
For fire, for fire.
Fire protection, in case there's a disaster or something.
We have, I get it now, okay. It's not that we're looking to generate new capacity for another town. But as you know, you get north on Sycamore Road, and it's Sycamore, DeKalb, DeKalb, Sycamore. And we are, we are sometimes... we are sometimes further north than the Sycamore pieces, and so there are some valve changes that we could do so that either party, and they could do the same for us too, either party is well served when it comes time to hook up a hose, we have enough hydrant, you know, proximity to make it happen.
So then Sycamore would fund, we'll call it the Spartan spigot then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
This, this is not a, this is not high on the list here, it's, it's a practical thing.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Alderman Smith.
Bill, maybe for Baxter Woodman, but what is, what classifies as a priority one? Like I, I'll be honest with you, look, I'm like, ooh, third ward has just got, I got a lot.
You got a lot?
Yeah.
And, yeah, third ward and parts of the fourth ward?
Fourth ward, yeah.
Well, it's, there are, there are a bunch of four, four inch mains there. And, and so we did a lot in the third ward when we did 14th, 13th.
Correct.
Part of 11th, North 11th. And we need, you know, ultimately, if we, money was no object, we'd be doing the same down on South Fifth Street, South Sixth Street, that's another pocket where we, it's part of the, not the original town, but some of the first additions to the original town back in the 1800s, early 1900s. And, and then after a while, we started getting sewer and water into those areas, there were a lot of little wells too in those days. And so we're, we're starting to replace and undo the first, second generation really of DeKalb residents, so.
Yeah, cause where I'm going with this is, you know, project is, we don't want to fix the street and then have to come in and.
No.
Put in an eight inch main and then I'm sure Reclamation District would want to be involved, so these are.
These are big projects.
These are big projects, that's where I'm going, yeah. So they have to be coordinated over long-term.
Yeah, and, and sanitary district as, as well as issues of South Fifth, South Sixth on the north side that you're talking about, Pleasant Street area and so forth. And, and then certainly the streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I should report?
Yeah, it is. And so everyone knows, the city manager attends the monthly Kishawaki Water Reclamation District meeting just to stay in the loop on what's going on with the sanitary district. Yeah, and for me, us looking forward, especially on the south side of town, to figure out how we're going to support continued growths going on there, this is a great move forward for that.
Just want to tip my hat again to Baxter Woodman. It's not easy when you're, when you're doing something that we're going to start making big money decisions on, it's not easy figuring out how many people we're going to be or how many people we have to serve and what, what kind of service do we have to provide? We don't have a crystal ball anymore in any of you. Normally, planning's a great thing until, until the, the event starts and then it's all, you know. But two, three years is about realistically all we can do, but we're looking at five, 10 years because you don't throw big main systems into the ground unless you have some educated guesses. So we were back and forth, Justin and I, Dan Olson, I want to thank too for working on this, trying to project, using our, our land use plan from 2022. And they were very patient with us because we would look at it, sit it down and about five days later say, no, that can't be, there's no way we're going to be that many people. So we did our best with the information at our disposal.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Moving on to number, or agenda item J, resolutions, number one.
Thank you.
Resolution 2025-053, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2035 for maintenance costs on Illinois State Route 38 and Illinois State Route 23. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Larson. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a 10-year agreement, we're just coming out of a 10-year agreement and we will be having 10-year agreements like this every, every 10 years to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you. The state of Illinois has two marked routes to go through the city of DeKalb, as you well know. And we have had a longstanding relationship where we do minor maintenance tasks and they pay us for those. And there is an escalator, it's not extravagant, but there's an escalator that helps. And so what you're seeing is, is a base contract for the next 10 years for the work we'll do to repair potholes and sealing some cracks and joints, we, we do drop our plows and plow those main streets and also we do some street cleaning and, and other such things. IDAT will continue to be responsible for major resurfacing, major curb repair and the like. It's worked well, we, we appreciate the help we get and they appreciate the work we do. So thanks also to the Public Works Department because they are right in the middle of all this and, and we're, we're prideful bunch, we like to do a good job.
Any comments or questions, counsel? Alderman Verbeck?
Reviewing the expectations of IDAT, 110,000 is not even close to what they are expecting our work to perform. So this is really just a contribution to the city to help support public works.
That's right. We're doing it all, you know, they're doing it, excuse me, all around the state and they have, this is indicative of their budget constraints, but they're giving us everything that we can get. It's in a proportional way to communities that are bigger and so forth.
Thank you.
Any others? Hearing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2025-053 passes. Number two, resolution 2025-054, amending resolution 2024-044 to increase the not-to-accede general contract for the construction of fire station number four at 1130 South Malta Road from $3,688,000 to $3,772,642. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Carlson. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As I explained in the background, we, we went to, to the bond market, borrowed money for, in advance of, of knowing what the bids were going to be. Bids came in very aggressively from, from urban construction, we're very grateful for that and they did a great job, they came in under, under our budget for the project, but a little over their bid, which we expected because we had money in the, in the budget for change orders. Examples, and the greatest amount was spent on this. You know where the fire station is and across the street on the, just, just on the east side of that, that drive, that private drive is a deep retention pond. When they built that pond and they're digging it, they, on top was topsoil. So where'd they put the topsoil? They put it over on the land that we eventually built the, the fire station on. And, and they didn't put a lot of clay on it, but they, as they got lower on that, they brought the clay over too. And then to grow grass, they had to put some more topsoil that they brought in or maybe got from some other place on the subdivision there. So when we're digging the hole and I'm watching that the first day, I'm thinking, well, we get through the topsoil, wasn't that much? And then we hit beautiful clay, I thought, man, this is, this is the nicest hole I've ever seen. And then we get down about three and a half feet and then we get into topsoil. That's an excavator and contractor's worst nightmare because now you don't have the bearing to put concrete footings and walls on. And so it went and, and that topsoil went deep, feet, nine inches. And so we had a, basically every, every square inch of that footprint was dug out and removed and we had to bring in clay. So that happened, we hit it twice. First time was about 30,000, the second time was as we were getting beyond the footprint of the build and now prepping the area that would be the back parking lot and so forth, guess what, same thing. And unfortunately, you know, you get down a little, you want to do a good job, you want to put in adequate base and all the rest of that, and then we hit the topsoil. So a good part of what you're seeing here is that and very, very little else. So we, we added a little bit more fiberglass for insulation in the exterior walls, we were doing what the minimum code required, but it looked a little bit thin. So we added to that. The total comes in well underneath, it is 84,642, which is about 2% of the overall bid, base bid, and it's identified for you here. This is, in, in terms of most projects that we've been involved in here over time, this is a very light, light load here. And then we still, we still have some money where we can probably pay back our G M T fund, which floated the cost for the architectural work. It's about $184,000 upfront to get this project going.
Counsel, questions or comments? Alderman Smith?
Bill, this still came in lower than the second bidder, right?
It did.
Yeah, that's right. So it's a good job, thank you.
Any others? Hearing none, roll call please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Resolution 2025-054 passes. Moving on to agenda item K, ordinances, second reading, we have none. Agenda item L, ordinances, first reading, number one, ordinance 2025-020, approving a water service agreement with Tim and Aaron Martins for 2581 Pleasant Street. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you. I point out that Tim is in the audience tonight and thanks for coming, sitting through. Bye Melissa. So Tim and Aaron live at 2581 Pleasant Street and they have been on a well, they'd like to get on the city system. There are no properties currently along Pleasant Street from P's going east to the airport that are unincorporated that have city water service, so this would be the first. We have done this in other places, you, you're very familiar with what we've been doing on Greenwood Acres. It would be a while before we got water out to them normally, but we have water on the south side of the road, or on the north side of the road. And we have been in the past happy to provide water to people who, who want to get on a really first-rate water system. The, the rate's 50% greater than what we charge annexed properties, but the water is, is worth it and the Martins agree and we, at the staff level, support this, it makes some sense. We want to be good neighbors, we're, we're expanding that, or we're building the, the solar farm in the direction of the houses that are on the north side of Pleasant Street and, and you know, we're, we're changing their landscape a little bit, I think we should be open at least for this and they're going to pay for it.
Counsel, questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Larson.
I just have a, a kind of a semi-related question. So if you look at the, the city map along Pleasant Street, it's kind of patchwork quilt like, this house in, this house isn't. And, and is, what are the, what are the, just are their choice, the owners?
Their, their choice, years ago, I guess, preceded, I, I don't, I don't know the particular stories.
But that brings up a great question because not just Pleasant Street, but we have, and many aren't aware of it, like even off of South or North First Street, we have Stony Creek, Kishawaki Lane, what is it, Manor Court, Kish, I guess those three, oh, and Timber Trail. These are all houses that are completely surrounded by the city of DeKalb, yet they're not in the city of DeKalb. So they're not paying, I think, city manager, library and city property taxes.
The city library, sometimes the park district, sometimes they, they're annexed by the park district.
So receiving all the benefits of the city of DeKalb, at least, maybe not the library, I'm sure they have to pay an extra fee to have a library card, but they're receiving the benefits, the benefits of the city of DeKalb without paying the, the proper taxes associated with it. I think Oakland has a portion too, Greenwood Acres Drive has a portion, where these are throughout the community.
The city attorney is anxious to say what the parameters are, but there are some occasions where we are allowed under state law to, if we surround these properties and they're of the gross acreages of, of a certain level, then we, we can do, we can force annex and then there are other cases where we don't surround them or there are too many acres and that kind of a thing. So each one we can take at a time, there's probably going to be a proposal to come before you by the residents of the Greenwood Acres Drive area who want now to, or many of them want to talk about annexation. This just came to us last week and there's a meeting that the sanitary district has set up for a week or two from now and we'll, we'll go and listen and answer questions that relate to the city, but that may get some traction as we go through the summer.
Cause these properties are outside of our building code enforcement as well.
And property maintenance code.
Yeah. So it'd be, I would like to bring it forth as, at some point as a consideration just to talk about it. Obviously, a lot of these people are living in these homes, they have been paying property taxes for a long time and this would be an additional burden. I'm sure there's costs on our end because we have to bring city water and sewer to them and all that. But it is a conversation we should start having where, much like we've modified a lot of our zoning, dotting our i's and crossing our t's, this might be another one of those that would be just a conversation to start having, yeah.
But for the moment, we're talking about Pleasant Street and.
Thank you. Back on track, beautiful. Yes, Alderman Smith.
Bill, if, if the well fails out there, do they have to come on our city water if there's, within certain distances?
If, if they are still unincorporated, then that's an issue between them and the county health department.
Oh, it is, okay. Mistaken, okay, thanks.
Any others?
Should have great pressure out there.
What's that?
Should have great water pressure out there.
All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance 2025-020 passes on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second reading?
Town moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Verbeck?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2025-020. You're more than welcome to leave at this point, but thanks for coming before us, yes. Moving on to number two, ordinance 2025-021, approving a special use permit at 611 through 615 North First Street for the expansion of Oakwood Cemetery, DeKalb Township. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
Town moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbeck. City manager, and I believe we have the township supervisor, Mary Hess, in the audience as well to answer any questions.
We do. Do you want to present, you want me to present and then you just, okay. Yes, Mary Hess, ladies and gentlemen, newly elected.
Newly elected, yes.
Supervisor, yep. So as I explained in the background, the township, DeKalb Township is, intends to purchase just under an acre of property from the First Congregational United Church of Christ on North First Street. The site's zoned for multifamily, it's legal non-conforming. What is proposed would fall loosely under the rubric of an institutional type use and specifically what is desired is that the township, which has responsibility for the Oakwood Cemetery, wants to expand that somewhat, not to put new plots in, but to create a park area with some walking paths, a memorial plaza, some trees and columbaria, which is a lot of churches are, are doing where they have the opportunity to, to expand and where they have some open space across the state and across the country. So the access has obviously been discussed with the church, provided through the parking lot of the church. The northern portion of this site is in the floodplain, as you know, but the township is only proposing some landscaping there and no, no structures, possibly a walking path in that area. They'd also comply with whatever the floodplain regulations may dictate in, in that area. So the Planning and, and Zoning Commission of the city of DeKalb had a public hearing on this on May 5th and by a vote of five to zero, there was one commissioner absent recommending council approval and we support their recommendation.
Counsel, questions or comments on this? Township supervisor, anything you want to comment on or, yes? Owen Township trustee, Catherine McLaughlin.
Thank you for considering this. With me, I have our newly elected trustee, Catherine McLaughlin. We are very excited for this project for multiple reasons. One. One is that the majority of the project is funded by a donor, so this is coming at a very low cost to taxpayers. And then the second thing is that this is going to provide a benefit to our community in the sense that year after year, more, more people are choosing to be cremated, and we're going to provide some alternatives for burial of cremains, and those will be at various levels of affordability, and so we think that this is an added benefit to the folks that live in our community. And then we are, you know, leaving the space as natural as possible, because it is a beautiful area. So multiple benefits coming from this project, so thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Anything? All right, thanks to DeKalb Township.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-one passes on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, seconded by Alderman Larson. Roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-one. Moving on to number three, ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-two, approving the final plat of the Dirks re-subdivision for thirty-four twenty, thirty-four thirty-five and thirty-four forty-seven Owens Lane, in the Bridges of River Mist subdivision, Marshall Dirks. And I believe Mr. Dirks is in the audience as well.
He is.
Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Carlson, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, I want to thank Mr. Dirks for his patience. He is doing something that's, which is eminently reasonable, considering he owns two lots, he'd like to build an addition to his house, a major addition, but it's going to cross the common lot line, and like to merge those two lots together, and has some other plans for the enjoyment of the lot that goes, extends to the corner at Owens Lane and the Bridges of River Mist, this is phase two. And he has gone through our process, a final plat is required for this, and the plat was reviewed by our staff, and then it was kicked to the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 5th, and as they did with the previous item, they voted unanimously with one commissioner absent to recommend your approval. We strongly recommend your approval.
And he is part of the leadership of proven winners, anytime you go to Lowe's and you see those beautiful plants, that's part of the brand there, so he has one of the best garden yards as well, driven by it multiple times. Any comments or questions?
Hearing none, roll call please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-two passed on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell, any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-two. Have fun with your construction there, Mr. Dirks. All right, moving on to number four, ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-three, amending chapter fifty-one, traffic schedule C, parking prohibited, as it pertains to minor alterations of parking restrictions for normal road due to roadway modifications. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Powell, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, as you remember, the last meeting, the council revised chapter fifty-one, one of the schedules, to establish a no parking zone across from the new school on North Normal Road, and that authorized our police to enforce that. In the new area with the raised median and so forth, there's no room for parking on the west side of the street anymore, and that would have been it, except that some rainy year will go through this, and the liquid coat, and a few other things. One thing leads to another, and it was observed that we had some other parking signs in the same general area that needed to be cleaned up, which, because they would cause some confusion once the school opened, and so that's what this is about. We recommend your approval.
Questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, roll call please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-three passes on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-three. And number five, ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-four, amending chapter fifty-one, traffic schedule S, school speed limit twenty miles per hour on school days when children are present, to establish a school speed zone along Ridge Drive and Normal Road, Mitchell Elementary School. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Verbic, city manager.
Okay, different schedule, I promised the last, having to do with this one block in DeKalb, but we need to have a school speed limit sign to define a twenty mile per hour speed limit on this stretch of Normal, and that's what this is about, we recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-four passes on first reading, five dollars, what I'm going to ask for next. All right, I'd take a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Carlson, to waive second reading for ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-four. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two-five dash zero two-four, and I was in no way promoting gambling. Moving on to agenda item M, reports and communications. Alderman Powell, you want to kick us off?
No report today.
All right, Alderman Verbic.
Congratulations to all the graduates, and a very exciting time of year for the Ward Six Business District, as we will see over one hundred thousand visitors to our business district, so welcome, thanks.
Alderman Carlson?
Just two things, I went to the Elks on Saturday, and they had a great car show, it wasn't Sully's the previous years, but really well attended, I got to hang with Alderman Perkins and talk some more, and I also went to a ninetieth birthday party of Mary Simons, who's lived in DeKalb most of her life, raised family here, great, great woman, and it was a great time, attended by a lot of people.
Alderman Larson?
No report.
Alderman Smith?
First thing is, Alderman mentioned, Sully's is actually having their eightieth celebration on Saturday, longstanding family in town, and I think probably one of our longest standing businesses at this point in town. The other thing is, the Skechers is getting ready to open, and I started noticing a lot of healthy development starting to take place in some of our empty storefronts, I mean, we're seeing a Barber College, I think, being relocated, another business out there, and then some storefront remodeling out in that area, so we're starting to see some general improvement to some of our storefronts in that area.
Awesome.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up about Sully's, that's a fourth ward establishment, I've known it my whole life, and now they're going to give me a lot of heart, thank you, Alderman Smith.
You know, it's interesting, people serve in the city of DeKalb for a number of years, on commissions or on the police force, and, you know, recently, we had the passing of Mr. Jim Rhodes, and I can't tell you how many people reached out asking, would I say something at a council meeting? And I think that is a real reflection of the individual himself, that this is, there was enough people out there that really wanted to feel and see some recognition, so I'm just going to take a moment and recognize Mr. Rhodes, you realize, he served on our police department for over fifty years in one capacity or another? I have here, like, traffic officer, accident investigator, truck enforcement officer, I think he was a CSO, he worked in the evidence division, he was a detective, I know Alderman Smith knew him quite well, but he also, and we recognized him not too long ago for his service on our airport advisory board, I believe he was on there for forty-three years. So, just wanted to take a moment and celebrate a human being in the city of DeKalb that really gave himself to our city, and I know his family, I know family members very well, that is the example of community service. He didn't have to do that, but yet he did, he chose with a career and the people that he loved, and stayed with that, and he also dedicated himself to a passion and an important component of our city with the airport, so just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Rhodes, and the family, for everything that he contributed to our city. Also want to thank, I won't call it the name, but a resident of the Knowles, reached out to me to say thank you on resurfacing the roads there. That is a really cool thing, when someone's reaching out to say thanks for what you're doing, because I think all of us know, it's not normally the feedback we get, but that's okay, because we want the feedback, because we need to know what we need to do to adjust, but that was really cool to receive that. Also went on a ride-along Friday night from nine to two-thirty with our very own DeKalb Police Department, Officer Patch was my escort the entire night, and ma'am, you are absolutely right, we have a lot of work to do in the city, but what I'll tell you, that was my second ride-along, and I've been on six now, it was boring, some traffic stops, there was a domestic with no violence involved, just called, you know, yelling was happening, so we showed up, but compared to four years ago, when I would go on a ride-along, and there were times I was, I'll use the word shocked, by what I saw all night long, and that is another credit to previous councils, previous mayors, this council, city staff and chief, the work you all do in watching your officers, how incredible they de-escalate in the professionalism with every single stop, it's just wonderful to do, so I would encourage any council member, go on one of those, and just see what it's like on a Friday or Saturday night in DeKalb. It's always educational. City manager Nicholas and I also met with the Terraces, we've had some conversations about that, so we had a productive meeting that lasted a little bit over an hour, and more things are transpiring there because of that meeting, so it was good to circle back with them.
We had a frank exchange of views as well, weren't you said?
Yes, I was being kind, yes. But no, it actually, you know what, I shouldn't be sarcastic in this, it was a really good, frank discussion that we had, yes, and I think both sides understood each other, and where we're at a little bit more, which was great. We also met with NIU's leadership, which we do on a regular basis, which is always good to keep in touch with what's going on in NIU, share what's happening at the city, and figure out how we collaborate with each other. Also went to the Northern Illinois Mayors Association meeting in Dixon, Illinois, to present on the Illinois Municipal League activities, it was great to be able to be around a bunch of mayors in Northern Illinois, and Steve Brazier, the mayor of the city of Sicomar, is now the president of NEMA, and then I want to give a shout-out to the Back Alley Market. I mean, someone told me they were, yeah, I know, I heard this constantly, packed, we had a vendor reach out, say, oh my gosh, the amount of people that came by my booth was phenomenal, so the crew that runs that, and that is not run by the city of DeKalb, even though I think Scott Zach probably is a little bit involved in stuff like that, and maybe the street department too, and, but it's downtown merchants that put on an incredible, incredible show there. With that, that's all I got, what about you, city manager?
Yeah, I just want to talk about taxes, can I? But the happy talk, so, since we had our last meeting, everybody got their tax bill, and, that's a scary, in years past, that was a scary event, it was good news this year.
It was really good news.
And, but I just want to give you some numbers, and this has, this has been out there, we've been talking about this trend and arriving, and then I want to get to why, okay? So, in the last five seasons, in other words, the tax years, two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four, the city has experienced an EAV increase of a hundred and twenty-nine percent, more than doubled, in other words, two-point-one-two-nine percent.
Which for all the folks at home, that means if you totaled up every building, house, commercial building, industrial building--
So the historic, the historic valuation, the wealth, all the accumulated wealth from eighteen thirty-six to two thousand twenty was five hundred eighty-five million, seven hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine, and it's now one-point-three-three-nine billion.
Staggering, yeah.
The, in this time, the city's tax rate, just the city's, has gone down forty-two The aggregate of all the local taxing bodies, and Chris is gone, but the school district has stepped up here, is down thirty-one percent, five years. And there are two main reasons why, one is that this council, and in particular, the mayor, have provided the leadership, the cajoling and pleading, and sometimes good old honest, frank conversation, to see that we all are pulling together, those people who are in decision-making positions, having to do with taxes, with the other taxing bodies. It hasn't been a straight line, and more work needs to be done, and not everybody has been fully on board all the time, but this council has, and has provided great leadership. The other thing, and I have to say, this is, been a phenomenal experience for all of us, whether we've been involved in the actual day-to-day, or we are just realizing the benefit of it, is our partnership with Meta. Without Meta's contributions in terms of new construction value, these numbers would not be here. Now, a lot of other companies have come, and there are certainly down there on the Gerla Road corridor, other fine companies that have come and made major, major contributions, but two-hundred thirty-five million dollars in two thousand twenty-four, that's what we got. So that was half of the accumulated wealth of this city in its first a hundred and eighty years. So we're doing everything we can to keep this going, it always gets more complicated the more relationships go on, not just with us and Meta, with, we've got other utilities we're working with, State of Illinois, and so forth, but I'm proud to be on board, because this is exhilarating when you think about it in this way, and we get down into the trenches a lot in council meetings, because there's a lot of stuff that just, it's just not as fun, and not as great to hear and to deal with, but this, I just thought it was worth taking a moment, and we'll see where we are next year, hopefully we keep it going, but I want to thank the people that we've dealt with, who've embraced us from Meta, Meta also in this same time, not only contributing to us by way of economic impact, but they've, just in the last three years, given away one-point-two million dollars to our social service agencies, which expands beyond what we've done as a city, and we are generous, I think, and looking to get more generous in the years ahead, but it's phenomenal what they, what they do. And here's the other interesting thing, that we're never out of contact with the company every week.
Talk to Terry today, yeah.
Yep.
All the time.
And they're showing, they're serving on committees, you know, working with some of our local agencies on, get this, bylaws. What company ever has done that, you know? In other words, they want to be rooted with us, and I, you can't, you can't invent that, and I think it's, you know, whatever you may read in the national press and so forth, their experience with the city of DeKalb has been phenomenal, and I'm very grateful for it.
And for our candy company too, just reached out, and I've got a meeting with them this week to find out, they want to engage on a larger way with the city of DeKalb as well, and they want to get more educated about what's going on, so we've got some